Good evening and welcome to the Board of Education Regular Meeting and Public Hearing on Property Tax Exemption for Firefighters and Ambulance Workers, Wednesday, February 7, 2024. Call to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sardines in here. Reading of the Mission Statement: We are committed to academic achievement and success for all students in a safe environment. In partnership with families in our community, our mission is to promote confidence, inspire a passion for learning, and to prepare our students to become responsible global citizens. Approval of the revised agenda. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're moving into the public hearing for the property tax exemption. We do have some speakers registered for tonight. They will be called up in the order that they signed up. The first speaker is Susan Sirello.
My name is Susan Sirello, and I'm a resident of Central Valley, and I'm a Village of Woodbury trustee. In January of 2023, I met with the president of Woodbury Community Ambulance, Debbie Beth, and the Woodbury Fire Chief, Chris Burke. They shared with me that both entities are in desperate need of volunteers. At that meeting, Debbie made a statement that really frightened me. She stated that if we do not step, if they did not step up their recruitment efforts, calls for help may go unanswered. Whether or not you have ever needed to dial those three numbers, 911, I am certain that in your mind, you believe that the volunteers of our EMS and fire department would come immediately to help you. I mean, that's the way it's supposed to work, right? Now envisioned calling 911 in your time of crisis and your call for help goes unanswered. Unimaginable, isn't it? In February of 2023, I reached out to Patrick Cahill on behalf of the Village of Woodbury and the volunteer members of our Woodbury Ambulance and Fire Department, and asked that the school district consider echoing the village and the town of Woodbury by also adopting the New York State Property Tax Exemption for firefighters and ambulance workers. Woodbury's EMS and fire department are manned solely by dedicated women and men who spend hundreds of volunteer hours serving our community. Adopting this law would not only entice community members to make the sacrifice to volunteer, but would also be a retention tool for those who already serve. It is a very small price to pay to ensure the safety of all residents in our community. I'd like to read to you a statement that New York Senator Monica Martinez recently made regarding a package of bills she introduced intended to help attract new EMS and fire department volunteers into service. She stated, "This critical call for new recruits is not a fire drill. A shortage of volunteers threatens response times and, by extension, public safety. We all know volunteers give their time and of themselves. They miss time with family and friends and miss important personal moments while out on calls, so without incentives, fewer and fewer are willing to make the sacrifice. Let's do what is needed to stamp out this crisis. Monroe Woodbury School Board, we ask that you join the village and the town of Woodbury and do what is needed for the community to stamp out our crisis. Thank you."
Next up, we have Andrew Giacamaza.
Superintendent Rodriguez, Board President Michael Sirello, Board Members, Staff One and All, I am Andrew Giacamaza, the mayor for the Village of Woodbury. I want to thank you for having me here this evening. I want to ask a question, and I really want to appeal to everybody here as taxpayers for the Village of Woodbury. What the, our volunteers provide to our taxpayers is not only saving lives, but they also save us money. If we had to go to a system of payment or paid volunteer, or paid workers to staff our fire and EMS, it would probably create an increase in taxes of about 40% for the residents of Woodbury. As, since I've been in office, we've looked for ways to incentivize, incentivize this position with volunteers. Nobody joins our fire or ambulance and says, "Boy, I'm going to go out there today and I'm going to save the taxpayers money." They're going out there to save lives and the benefits that come along with it. This would create another level for us to say, "Hey, listen, here are all the things that, the benefits that we have to be a volunteer in Woodbury." Now, as somebody who believes they could sell rosary beads for the Pope, this, the incentive that you can provide tonight will go a long way for us in terms of retention and recruitment. I ask you to strongly consider that, and I thank you for your time tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Zayed Khadir.
He's not here.
He's not here?
Sam.
And Mr. Wayne Che Choi.
Good evening.
Good evening.
First of all, I'd like to thank the board for their time because they're volunteers also. And what I'd like to say is, the difference between first responders and most of us are volunteers, that we get called out in the middle of the night, 3:00 or 4:00 in the morning, to do what we have to do, and then we go to work. As a former school board member, village trustee, and a first responder for Monroe Volunteer Ambulance for 27 years, I am speaking to you in support of the, the tax incentive for first responders. I understand both sides of the coin because I've been on both sides. I've been in your shoes, and I'm the president of Monroe Volunteer Ambulance Corps. I understand that it's tough because now you have to find the money to fund this, and there's going to be some shortcomings and tightening of the budget. But on the other hand, okay, consider the incentive as an investment in the community. Orange County is in a crisis. Volunteers are dwindling and are at all-time low. Monroe Volunteer Ambulance is close to answering 2,000 calls per day, up 2,000 calls per year, which averages five to six calls per day. Currently, we have a hybrid model. We have paid people during the day and volunteers at night and weekends. Other organizations rely on volunteers to staff them 24/7. 24/7. Without volunteers, we have to pay EMTs, and as the previous speaker said, the mayor, that, that would be a huge increase at municipality level. Hopefully, the first step, and this is the first step, and it's the right way, direction to go, and we get more from the state as time goes on for people who don't know this, the younger people. But with this, I feel we, we can retain more volunteers and up our recruitment. In closing, I'd like to support the incentive again. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Next up is the approval, approval of the property tax exemption for firefighters. For the board, is there any discussion or questions at this? Okay, I'm going to read what the proposal was that went out. Percentage of the tax exemption at 10%. Amount of time served as a volunteer firefighter to be eligible, two years. May grant a lifetime exemption of 20 years of service so long as the member continues to reside in the school district. May continue to provide the exemption to the unremarried surviving spouse of a volunteer killed in the line of duty. May continue to grant exemption to unremarried surviving spouse when a volunteer had a permanent exemption and passes away. Agree to, agree to pass the resolution. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Resolution passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone who came out and spoke tonight. Next up is the update on questions or comments raised from interested citizens. The only one that I recall from the last meeting was the supervisor of Monroe spoke about the football under the lights. So do we have an update to provide here? Is that still being looked at? Because I know we were looking at schedules.
Yep. It, it is still something that we're in the planning phase, but we are planning to be able to offer some evening games in the fall. Yep.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions?
Evening or Friday night? Sorry, had to do it.
Well, I mean, if you remember last year, we ended up having, I think it was a Thursday night game because we were, we ended up having, there was no referees available on Friday night. So we were, we were planning on offering a Friday night game, but we couldn't get refs, so we ended up having to do it on Thursday, but the goal would be Friday night. Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, good. Thank you. Questions or comments from interested citizens? We had the public hearing. I'm not aware of anyone else signing up to speak about anything else. Okay. Introduction of Orange County Alcoholism and Drug Abuse Council Prevention Specialist. I can, I can take.
Dr. Hasler.
So, Monro Berry is very fortunate to have a close relationship with the Orange County Drug Abuse Council. We've partnered with them on many, many initiatives in the past. This spring, Mary Alice Kovach reached out to me and to the school district to say that they were going to be applying for a grant through the state to secure some funds and hire a position called the Prevention Specialist. And if that grant application was successful, that the Prevention Specialist, there's a number of them throughout the county, one of them would be able to be supporting the Monro Berry School District. And we're fortunate to announce that they received the grant, and we have someone who's hired, and I turn it over to Mary Alice from the Alcohol and Drug Abuse Council.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. So our program is, yes, funded by the state and county opioid settlement funds. It was a long time coming, as I'm sure you're all aware of the opiate crisis that Orange County was no stranger to, just like the rest of the state and country. And we had a really comprehensive application that included a sustainability model. So we have had a longstanding relationship with the district, and we were ready to take that relationship to the next level. So Monroe Woodbury, in addition to five other districts, do you want me to name them?
Oh, you can.
Okay. So it's Monroe Woodbury, Valley Central, Pine Bush, Goshen, Port Jervis, and Highland Falls. You are the six initial districts who we are piloting this project with, and I'm looking at one of the long partners that we've been working with here. So we are happy to have been able to focus in the prevention efforts here by placing a prevention specialist in the district. And I will let him introduce himself in a moment, but I just wanted to make sure that you all know how grateful we are for this partnership, and by following this evidence-based and sustainable prevention model, we hope to be able to replicate this throughout Orange County and possibly the state and the Hudson Valley. Prevention is often overlooked when it comes to drug and alcohol use, so we want to make sure that we're starting early and often talking to our youth and talking to our parents and families. And what our prevention specialist will do is become enmeshed in the fabric of the district and be another trusted person, another trusted adult who can talk with the students, talk with the families, and really address the prevention issues that maybe have been slipping through the cracks. We're excited to be here. We're excited for this project, and I will introduce Zebadiah Francis.
Wow, this is.
We do this for everyone who comes.
Yeah. So, as Mary Alice was saying, I am one of the six specialists in Orange County. I am working in the Monroe Woodbury High School and the Middle School. I started this week, very well-welcome from the district. We're set up, we're, well, we're working to set up the referral system right now. And in the school, I'm working with Mr. Ferrier over there and other staff who are there as well, so that they're able to place me in a position which best supports me and also supports the students. As you know, some of the students, they don't really connect with other older adults. They might feel more familiar with somebody who is younger or can relate to them, so I felt like this is a really unique and special opportunity, and I am blessed and grateful to.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. So we brought a very small, for the amount of participants, flyer. We brought like 15, but this also will, will be available and will go out, and thank you for all of your hard work, Karen, to get this going. And I do want to mention also, as part of this project, we also have hired a mental health prevention specialist. So that person will work in conjunction with our substance abuse prevention specialist, the co-occurring aspect of drug and alcohol prevention and mental health prevention to really level us up. And hopefully, the ultimate goal is that we take this to a national conference within the next five years. That's goals, right? So our contact information is available from various sources, and again, thank you very much for your time and thank you for having us. Thank you.
Eric, maybe a question for you?
Sure, sure.
Is anything going to go out to parents to just make sure they're aware of everything in case there's anything they want to talk about?
Yeah, I mean, it's something certainly that we can, we can probably coordinate with Carol and do a news story on. Yes, that, there we go. And what's great about the program is the, Zeb's role is, is, it's K-12, obviously, a lot of the focus is at the middle level and at the high school level. It's not only intervention with students the way that Zeb was describing, but it's also preventative trainings. You know, he can offer trainings for parents, he can offer assemblies for kids in school, you know, presentations in health classes and things like that. So there's a, a real wide range of different opportunities. So I definitely think that that's something that we can, we can coordinate with Mary Alice and, and get additional information on the website.
Thank you.
Yep.
Right now, is it more referral based, or is it like if a student wanted to come talk, like open door policy?
Um, sure. Obviously, it's something because technically, Zeb works for the, the Orange County Alcohol and Drug Abuse Council. We also have an arrangement with the Orange County Department of Health as well, where we have a mental health specialist that's, that's within the building as well. We have to have parent permission in order to be able to have him work directly with kids, since he's not a district employee. So there's a little bit of like a referral process and getting permission from parents in order to be able to like provide direct intervention with kids. But again, that being said, he can certainly go into health classes and speak broadly and provide presentations, but when it comes to actual direct intervention, we need parent permission in order to be able to do that.
Just like currently, we do have a, a partnership with the admins in the buildings that if there is a student who is, is struggling with use in school, maybe they're caught with paraphernalia or vaping, we do administer a program called Teen Intervene, which falls under prevention, but it's actually an expert model, and it is widely used here, and we're grateful for that as well. So instead of the administrator handing the brochure to the parent and putting the onus on the parent to say, "Hey, you should call there," and, you know, this would be a helpful program, we can coordinate that within the building and, you know, Zeb could maybe do the reach out, and it's just for that really early intervention. The counselor, so this is not a counseling position, it would be for that first interaction, the first time a student is struggling, through doing presentations and trainings in classrooms, some students might identify that are not actively using in school. We would coordinate that with the student assistance counselors, with the school social workers, and the county. So just another person to kind of add that very low layer of education and early intervention.
And again, to echo that, we have many kids that, that have participated in that program. Prior to now, they would have to go elsewhere in order to do it. Similar to getting services through the county for counseling and things like that, we would have to send kids to Newburgh, or to Goshen, or to Middletown in order to be able to receive that support, which is problematic at times for people. So to be able to have it onsite, offered directly within the school district, is a great opportunity for our kids and our families.
And we also have an online piece, right? Am I correct?
We can, yes, the intervention can be done via Zoom, Google Meet. It has been done like that.
Because sometimes we have students that we meet with and part of, and I don't want to use the word consequence, but part of what we do is to try to get to the piece that brought them to a hearing or a suspension, and so part of what we do is, is refer them. And usually, the parents are very supportive about that. So it's, it's a, it's a great, it's a great program. Thank you.
Yes.
I have a question. It's K-12, is there plans to do anything in the elementary schools?
There is. I, we just haven't had the opportunity yet to reach out to the elementary principals, but yes, there is definitely some plan to, we want to really just do an assessment of what prevention is already being done, how we can integrate this position or other staff from the agency into some of the elementary buildings, get some programming going. They do heavily participate, Pine Tree specifically, in the poster contest every year. So we want to enhance and encourage that relationship. And just one other barrier that we have had in some school districts, and this is one, is that we have never had a Spanish-speaking person who implements Teen Intervene. So we do now have three people on our staff who are Spanish-speaking. So if that is something that needs to happen, we can, Zeb can coordinate with our Spanish-speaking facilitators and get that parent involvement piece, and that was something that we would be lacking sometimes because we didn't have anyone who could do that. So that's another big piece.
I was just going to say, if you said it, I'm sorry, but is it a rolling position? Like, it's just this year? Is it until next?
So the opioid settlement funds, and this is public knowledge, that as the, as the funds were awarded, can be up to 17 years. Our grant is in five-year increments. So in terms of planning for the future and sustainability of the project, you know, we have five years to kind of figure out where, where it goes.
Committed to us for five years?
You are, we are committed to you for five years. Yes, yes. So is Zeb. He signed a contract. Just kidding, we don't have those. Does anyone else have any other questions?
No.
Just a big thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. No, thank you.
Zeb, welcome.
I appreciate it. Like I said, open, welcome with warm arms. It was, it was great.
Thank you.
Good to hear.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next up, we have Dr. Hasler and Mr. Kravitz for the assessment presentation. And I understand it's going to be brief but brilliant.
Oh.
Oh. Maybe. Brief but brilliant.
No pressure.
No pressure.
Not to put you on the spot, but.
Oh, there you go.
Thanks. Ready?
I'm ready.
All right.
So, thank you as always to the board for the opportunity to speak this evening. This is an annual presentation that we do regarding our 3-8 ELA and math assessments. We had talked originally about doing the presentation and combining it with the reasons presentation that it did in the fall. However, it, it took the state a while to release the embargo for these results, which is the reason why this presentation's happening in February. The first slide usually in these presentations is just to kind of provide a little bit of context to assist with reviewing the various data points that we're going to be talking about this evening. So the assessments that we are presenting on are the 3-8 ELA assessments, which was administered in April of 2023, and the 3-8 math assessments, which were administered in May of 2023. The assessments for the 2023 school year for the ELA 3-8 test were all administered on the computer. There was an option for paper-based testing, however, we've historically administered the ELA exam on the computer, and we continued that practice for the, the 2023 round of assessments. However, the math exam this past year was exclusively administered paper-based in Monroe Woodbury. Once again, we had a choice, and you may recall from last year's presentation, there was a lot of discussion about computer-based testing versus paper-based testing, and we made the decision for the 2023 administration to return back on the math side. Something that was new for the 2023 round of assessments is, it was the first assessment that linked to the next-gen standards. State Ed has been talking for years about the shift from the Common Core standards to the next-gen standards, and 2023 for the 3-8 ELA and math tests was the first round of tests aligned to the new set of standards. One of the things that we always say in the presentation is that you can sort of fact-check any of the data points that we present tonight on the State Ed website. If you were to do that and go to the State Ed website, you would see a disclaimer that they put up there saying that the comparison to any past exams cannot be made because this is a whole new set of standards that the exam is being aligned to. So even though we do a little bit of comparison because of some of the goals that we set last year, ultimately, State Ed has clearly stated that there, there shouldn't be any comparisons to any past years. Another thing that has been unique this year is, again, normally the presentation happens in the fall. However, this year, the state didn't lift the embargo to speak publicly about the data points until January 25th, like last week. So usually, it's October, November when we're able to give this presentation. It, it's a little bit challenging, only because we're going to be talking about data now that is almost a full years, year old, where students who sat to take this exam are now, we just finished the first semester of the school year, they're halfway through the school year of the subsequent year after taking the exam. They're, they're getting ready to sit down for the next exam. So you kind of have to bear with us as we talk about the data points that we're referring to students and, and test results of kids that took the exam nearly a full year ago.
And I think it's also important to just remember that these tests are one piece of our puzzle. This is a snapshot in time. These were administered over a few days in, in April and May, but it's only part of their story. And we're going to be talking about growth and proficiency, but growth in and of itself isn't just about the number of kids who, you know, are, are testing at a level three or four. There is growth from kids who moved from level one to level two. There is growth even that, that should be celebrated from kids who start at a low level two and move to a high level two over the course of the year. And sometimes that can get lost, right? Sometimes it can get lost just in the proficiency numbers. But there are celebrations that our staff are doing all the time because we've seen a kid move from, from a low two to, to a high two, whether it's on this assessment or another progress monitoring assessment that we've used, and that's important to keep in mind as well.
Awesome.
Thanks.
So, last year, we, we did the same presentation, and we spoke to the board about three goals that we were going to work on for this school year. The first goal was to increase participation. One of the, one of the things that we've spoken about in past presentations is not only, obviously, the proficiency and how our kids are doing on the exam, but it's also been participation because historically, Monroe Woodbury had quite a few students that refused to take the exam. So one of our goals going into the 2023 administration was to try to get that participation to increase. The reason being is that you, the, the assessments become more valuable for us to look at broader decisions that we're making in terms of curriculum and progress monitoring tools and things like that when more kids take the exam. If we have, you know, there was a time where we only had about 50% of our kids taking the test, it's hard to really use that data as truly being representative of the cohorts of kids if you only have one out of every two kids sitting to take the exam. So going into it, our goal was to increase the number of students participating in ELA and math assessments as cohorts in grades four through eight. The reason why we were looking at grades four through eight is we wanted to take the number of kids that participated in 2023 and increase that number by 5% into the, I'm sorry, 2022, and increase that number by 5%. So it's the third grade through eighth grade, and then when that cohort of kids rolls into the 23, 24 school year, 22, 23 school year, it would increase by 5%. So in 2022, we had 2,060 students sit and take the exam in grades three through seven. When that cohort of kids rolled into the next grade in 2023, we had 2,127 students sit and take the exam, so there was an overall increase of 3.25%. We did that in a variety of different ways. We did newsletters going home, we did crusader chats. You may remember that we had an elementary and a, and a middle school crusader chat. The superintendent sent a newsletter home to families. We, you know, we, we really, there was stories on the district website. We really worked hard in order to get the word out about the importance of these exams. On the math side, in 2022, we had 2,013 students sit and take the exam, and in 2023, we had 2,115 students take the exam, and that was an increase of 5.07%. The 2,115 students includes 118 students that sat for the biology exam, because those students were.
The math.
I'm sorry, the, I'm sorry, the algebra exam, agreed, thank you. They sat for the, they may have sat for the bio exam too. But the, 118 students who sat for the algebra exam, because those students at seventh, as seventh graders, were required to sit and take the exam as seventh graders, so we wanted to include them in the cohort of whether or not they tested when they were in eighth grade. So overall, we saw an increase of 5.07% student participation in math.
I have a question before you move on to goal two. Couple of questions. So how many in total are eligible to take the test?
So it, it's every single student, basically.
Right, so if it's 2,060?
Sure.
5,000?
Yep. If, if math speaks, I'll give you the total, I'll give you the total.
Okay. And then just explain again the comparison of 3 to 7, 2022, and then 4 to 8, is because you want to include those same cohort of students?
Correct. So it's the, the number of kids, and we were measuring the same number of kids rolling into the following year. The next goal is third grade who didn't take the, the, the assessment when they were second grader. So that's the reason why third grade had their own goal, because they were starting out as a new had their own goal, because they were starting out as a new cohort coming in.
Okay.
So we wanted to measure the kids that we knew would have to be sitting for the exam the following school year.
Just consistency of.
Correct. It, it's comparing the same numbers, apples to apples.
So we're a little shy on the goals, on the goal?
Right. On the ELA side. Correct.
Close on the other.
Yep.
Do you have any speculation as to why?
Um, we had, I mean, one of the things that we're going to talk about later on in proficiency is we had one grade level, and I can speak specifically at the middle school, sixth grade for us was the only grade level where we actually saw a decline in students from fifth grade to sixth grade sitting and taking the exam. And if you notice, in a later slide, we have the percentage by grade level of participation. You see a drop in the middle school. And, and for whatever reason, there continues to be a, a belief at the middle level that kids don't need to take the exam. And that's not true. You know, the, the expectation at the state is that all kids sit and take the test.
I'll say, and this is not, I, I have middle school kids, not in this district, but it's challenging because a lot of their friends, and you may know this if you've had middle school kids, they come home after day one and they say, none of my friends are taking this assessment. Why do I have to take it? And you'll see a jump or a dip, even from the students who participated at the middle school in ELA compared to those students who, who participated in math, because math was after. So that's also part.
It ended up, we were over 80, and again, you'll see this in a later slide, we were over 80% participation in sixth grade in ELA, but we went down to like 70 and change in math because just from the ELA exam to the math exam, kids realized, oh, my friend didn't take the ELA exam, so therefore I'm not going to take the ELA exam.
So, so is it, is it the difficulty of the exam, or is it just the peer pressure not to take it?
I, I think at the middle level, it's a combination of a variety of different things. It's, kids see their peers doing it, and they don't, and, and the difference is, the way that the exams are scored, the, the exams are different than a region's exam, where a region's exam is a numerical grade, and it's something that goes in part of a student's GPA. These are not part of a student's GPA the way that the region's exams are.
So, so these exams are used as a data set
Right.
For the state to assess.
Right.
In order to help us.
Student progress.
Right.
Correct.
Is there any incentive we could give? When you take it?
Yeah. I mean, you know, we, we talk about all the, the, you know, important aspects about why, you know, people should take the exam. There's a variety of reasons. Even though Matt said there's a lot of different tools that we use to assess kids, you know, it's, it's a measure of overall how things are going. You know, the, the shift from the Common Core standards to the next-gen standards, our curriculum has to align with that move. We've been doing work over many years of making sure that we've aligned to the new state standards. These assessments assist us in how are we doing in preparing our kids for what the state is saying is an expectation for the, you know, the students to know.
How, how does, how do they assist us? What do we do with that information that in turn causes us to change curriculum?
So, so literally, every single question is linked to a standard. And, and I think I've talked about this in, in past.
Yeah. I just want everyone to hear, like, how do you analyze, like, what, how are you going to change something?
Sure. So, I, I mean, the, the questions, we get itemized results for every single question, linked to every single standard that is, is assessed in that.
And the scores in each one of those questions?
Every single.
By student, by class, by teacher, by school, by district.
So you can find two in the program?
Correct. That's exactly right. Yep.
So. So, so the question, I have one more question. Are there any financial repercussions for the district? If the numbers, let's say, only 50% of the students take it, or 40% of the students?
No.
Does it impact our aid from the state?
No.
No. That was something that years ago was a talking point, but it never came to fruition.
Dr. Hassler, can you just speak to, because you, you said students can come in sixth grade and just not take, take the test. That's not how, how it happens, though. Kids just don't come in and say, I'm not taking the test.
Correct. We, we confirm with the, that's exactly right. If, if a student, unless, if a student, if we don't have a record of a parent notifying the school that they don't want their child to take the test, or that the student is refusing, if a student just comes in and says, I'm not taking the exam, we confirm that with the parent, to make sure that the parents' wishes are in alignment with the student's wishes.
So, so do, do parents understand that the education of kids suffers if they don't take this exam? It's not so much scoring. It's the fine tuning and the adjustments that needs to be done on a, on a class level.
And I think that, that, that was the, the major out push that, you know, that we tried to do last year in communication of why take the exam. You know, we, we held the crusader chats to sit and talk about, you know.
We've heard parents stand up last year and complain about math, and complain about English, and complain about everything, but this is exactly what needs to be done.
Right.
Why include bio and algebra? Doesn't that skew things one way or another?
Well, so there, in order to be able to make comparison, the reason why bio, the reason why, the reason why algebra is included in that, that participation is because the seventh grade students had to sit for the exam in seventh grade. When they go into eighth grade, they can take either algebra or math.
You don't want to lose those numbers.
If they take math eight, if they take algebra, they're not required to sit for the math eight exam. So you don't want them to, they still count as a participant, even if they take the algebra exam. However, later on, when we talk about proficiency, we only talk about how the kids did on
Okay, that was my question.
We only talk about how the kids did on the math eight assessment.
We had 118 students in eighth grade take the algebra assessment. So they're included for this number, but they're not included for the proficiency.
That's what I was asking about, the skewing of the.
Yep.
Would it be worth it to poll the families, at least in that particular grade, if not the building, to see what the reasoning behind the not taking it is?
Yeah. I, I mean, I think we can. Sure, we can.
I'm just saying, as a next step, to figure out why?
Yeah.
I mean, if it is something as simple as peer pressure, then I don't know.
Well, maybe just explaining to the families, like, why it's necessary.
You know, Ted.
Yeah. And again, our, our plan is to do the same this year, you know, make sure that we get the message out about, you know, what we use these exams for and, you know, and that sort of thing.
At the end of the day, and this is goal number two, which require, would involve participation just for
Nice way to move into this.
Oh, there you go. I had, I had the answer to your question.
Gentlemen?
I was told brief but brilliant.
Yeah.
What I want to do is just take a five-minute recess to allow people to leave.
Oh, sure.
Because it's very hot in here, and I do see some people's spritzing.
Well, you can all watch this on the website.
Yes.
So we're going to take a five-minute recess.
All right, no problem.
People don't know for five minutes. We're good.
Okay, we're going back live.
I only know her because she is.
From a.
Karen Jordan?
We're restarting the meeting after a short recess to allow the room to air out. No board business was discussed during the recess. Back to the gentlemen for the presentation.
All right, so we talked about the importance of our students taking these assessments and we tied one of our goals to grade three participation because there wasn't an opportunity to see cohort over cohort. So what we did last year, we wanted at least eighty-eight percent of our students to take in third grade to take the ELA and the math assessments. These are the, this is how we did. Eighty-eight percent of our grade three students took the ELA, eighty-nine percent of our grade three students took the math. Similar to what Eric said, we want our students to take part in this, in this, in this snapshot. It's another bit of data that we can use to make decisions. One of the things that it allows us to do, it allows us to look at trends over, over years. It allows us to look at the performance of specific student subgroups, which is really important. And it also allows us, similar to what Eric said earlier, how students fared with answering specific questions that are directly tied to every standard. So that's goal number two for grade three participation.
It was a pretty high start. Were we on the cusp of that? Like where were we before we?
We were low, we were lower than that, I mean for.
Well, yeah.
Twenty twenty-two?
Of course you're lower than eighty-eight. You said it at eighty-eight, so.
We did. So we wanted it to be eighty-eight because we felt like that was a good number. It was.
So what were we going up from? Was it fifty, sixty, seventy?
Eighty, eighty, third grade twenty twenty-two was eighty-six percent.
And this is a brand new cohort of kids, right? This is class of twenty thirty-three.
Correct. That was, that was twenty twenty-two.
That sounds scary.
Yes, that we talked about that for a while today. It was wild when you think about it.
Twenty thirty-three, wow.
Yeah. So this is goal number three. Goal number three was that we would increase the number of students reaching proficiency on both the ELA and math state assessments as cohorts in grades four through eight by ten percent. This slide ties into the next few slides. This is the table that really supports the bar graphs on the, on the next slide. From twenty twenty-two, we had seven hundred ninety-three students in grades three through seven who scored at the proficient level. That rose to nine hundred eight, so an increase of a hundred fifteen students. You'd also see the total tested, which is what we wanted as far as participation. So the percent change year over year as far as proficiency was four point one nine percent for, for ELA.
And then on the math side, we had six hundred ninety-two proficient students out of the two hundred thirteen that tested in twenty twenty-two. And then in twenty twenty-three, we had nine hundred and ninety-two out of the one thousand nine hundred and ninety-seven. Again, that total tested number is a hundred and eighteen less than the participation slide that I gave earlier because we took the proficient students out and the total tested out of the a hundred and eighteen algebra students who took the exam because that's just the proficiency on the grade eight math exam.
Do we know how they did on the algebra?
A hundred and eighteen took it, a hundred and eighteen passed, which is a hundred and eighteen. So it would be, and you'll see a slide later on that we have a comparison of grade eight of just the math eight and then inclusive of, if you looked on the State Ed report card for the middle school, it does a combined score of both math eight and algebra.
And this is a pass fail type of the test?
This is a one, two, three, four, yes. It's not, it's not a zero out of a hundred the way that the algebra exam is.
So since, let's say from two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-four, what have we learned about the fine tuning? The program? I mean, what, what kind of results do we have?
So, we're gonna get into that.
Dr. Hasler, can you guys define proficiency? Because not everybody knows what, what proficiency means.
Sure. So, so the assessment is scored when, when you are a parent and you get the, you know, every single parent of a student who sat and took the exam gets a report. You get a scaled score and then it gives you the ranges of a one, a two, a three, or a four. Proficient, passing, you know, we're used to the term passing, but the term now used by State Ed is proficient, is a three or a four on the exam. So any, any of these proficiency rates that we're talking about, the numbers of threes and fours that kids score on the assessment, which is different than the algebra exam, proficient on the algebra exam is sixty-five and above.
And what's different about that is proficiency on a regions is always sixty-five or above. What happens here is every time a student takes the, or every year, the state changes what they call the cut scores. So what one year might have been good enough to get a three or a four, the following year might be only good enough for a two. Or a two in, in one year might be good enough to, to score at level three the, the following year. New York State is, they're interesting that way.
And, and that was, I think, part of the factor with the shift to the next gen standards. The cut scores change annually along with the standards that changed this past year.
Oh, sorry. Is that why the goal is growth in proficiency and not a particular percentage of proficiency?
What do you mean? Like, for us, the way that we look at it is rather than just saying we want to get, you know, obviously we would love a hundred percent proficiency in, in every single category, but the goal for us is, similar to what we were talking about, is growth. Like we, we, and, and that's one of the things that we're starting to dig even deeper on is the growth that we're talking about here is exclusively the numbers of threes and fours. When in reality, digging deeper, we should be talking about the student that got a one as a third grader. The goal would be if we can get that student to a two. Now, that student might not appear on our proficiency total overall, but guess what? That student grew from the scaled score the previous year of a one to a two, the subsequent school year.
I have another question. So the three and the four, is that a grade or is that the percentile?
No.
So three being you're just over fiftieth percentile of all the students in New York State tested and now you're in the one standard deviation, two standard deviations above the mean.
No.
It's a factual grade.
You like meet the standards, right?
You're meeting the standards.
You meet the standards at three. No, you meet the standards. Like you're, you're on standard. You, you are proficient.
In a bell curve, you're right smack in the middle. Okay, so it's not, it's not a numerical grade. It's just, it compares you to the rest of the state.
Correct.
The rest of the students.
No, no. And, and the reason why I say that is that they don't norm it on a bell curve because the state average, right, you know, depending upon the grade level fluctuates. It's not, if that was the case, you'd always have the same number of ones, twos, threes, and fours on an annual basis and that's not the case. It varies grade level to grade level. They create ranges of what is proficient and meeting the standard. It's not based upon the bell shaped curve the way that you're talking about. Because otherwise, if you looked at the state results, every grade would be distributed in the same way.
Population.
Correct.
It's actual, it's actual factual knowledge.
Correct. It sounds like there's a secret sauce New York State has.
And they keep changing it every year, right? I mean.
Well, and there are, there are, yes, they keep changing it every year. And there are rules that within New York State that are, are unique to New York State. We talked about this. There is now, we have students who are, were classified as our English language learners. So if they want to test out of, of being an English language learner, they could do it one of two ways. They could score a certain level on the NICE SLAT or they could score a particular, a lower level on the NICE SLAT and pass the ELA exam and then they would all of a sudden find themselves out of.
What do you say, on the NICE SLAT?
That's New York State English as a second language test.
So that is specific to students who, who receive ELL services. So that being said, there are, there are things within New York State that don't always seem to make a, make a ton of sense. We have students who've been, and again, we have, we have students who have been in this country for just over a year who sit for this ELA assessment. That's, this ELA assessment is challenging for students who've been here and speak English as their first language and been here a long time. To, to have students, and that's not making an excuse, but it's just our reality. We have students who've been here for, you know, three hundred and eighty days and they're, they're sitting here.
So there is value.
Three hundred and eighty-six.
Sorry, sorry.
Three hundred and eighty-six.
No, 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 three hundred eighty, three hundred sixty-five is.
Oh, yeah, there you go.
But doesn't that skew our results?
It could, sure.
It does. Well, not it could.
It does.
It does.
Just a quick question about process. Do the kids get provided the results?
So, so the parents get provided the results. Here's, here's, here's the issue.
But.
Not what you did wrong, or not what you did right.
Right. You don't get the test back. A parent has a right to come in to request to see their child's test. But it's not like you sit down for your social studies test and you take it and then the teacher gives it back to you and you can see every single question that you get wrong. You, you don't get the, you don't get the, you get the scaled score, which there's no explanation individually of.
You're doing it for the group of students.
But Dr. Hasler, does a teacher know? What, do they know what the kids are getting wrong?
Well, you said you get it all broken down.
They do.
Yes.
They do. So our principals at the two, five levels and, you know, and I know the departments at, at the middle school, they get their student results both in two ways. One, the students that they currently have and then also the way, the students who they had in, in the previous year.
So a teacher would know, oh, I need to work on how this is presented so my kids get it. They, they understand it better.
And we, and we get, the, the report that we receive, there, there are many, many different ways to aggregate the data. Where, I mean, again, we, we've talked about in the past how there are questions on the exam that are field test questions for future exams that are not released for public information. So the state comes out with a report after the exams to say, of all of the questions that the kids took over the two days, here are the ones that actually count towards their score. And then once they release those test questions, we get a report that shows us question one is linked to this standard. Out of the three hundred kids in grade three that took the exam, here's how many kids put A, here's how many kids could put B, here's how many kids put C, and here's what the correct answer is. And we have the ability to see how our kids are doing linked to that standard based upon that question. We also get those results in comparison to Orange Ulster BOSI's that we're gonna talk about and New York State that we're gonna talk about, where sometimes we see anomalies where our, our correct responses and incorrect responses are in alignment with the state and with the region. Other times we are an anomaly and we look at it saying, wow, this is a problem for us. It seems like this particular topic was particularly challenging for our kids on this exam this year and we need to focus in on it and we may need to stretch that.
Do we ever get the opposite of that?
There is sometimes the opposite.
We've done very well on something.
But we looked, we looked at data, we were talking about this in preparation for this presentation and Eric had pointed out, I think it was sixth grade ELA and, right, it was sixth grade ELA?
It was sixth grade ELA.
And literally took the same standard in two different questions. So the standard does not change. The standard is whatever that particular standard is.
It was eighth, it was eighth grade math.
Eighth grade math, even better. So the same standard in two different questions, as a whole, do you want to explain how they did?
Sure. So, so basically, same standard on last year's math exam, there were two questions linked to the same standard. The first question, twenty-two percent of our kids got the question correct. And we're like, oof, that's not a good number. That's a problem. We gotta focus in on that standard. The other question linked to the same standard, eighty-five percent of our kids got that question correct. Linked to the same exact.
Question.
I'm, I'm.
It's a poorly, poorly phrased question, probably not tested.
So that, but then what we do is we look at it and we say to ourselves, how did everybody else do in comparison to that? We were then one percent of the norm on, for the twenty-two percent of the kids that got it right on the first question, we were in, within one percent of how everybody else did on that question, which means everybody else also didn't do well on that question. For the question that eighty-five percent of our kids got it correct, we were eighteen percent higher, which to me shows that we were more skilled in the way that that question was written in comparison to everybody else. But we were, so we have to go back and we have.
They need to rewrite.
Correct.
Yeah, or we have to go back and look at that exact question and say, do we have to practice?
Looking at that question.
Correct. Did you, Mr. Anderson, did you get?
No, we'll, we'll talk off.
Okay, okay, okay.
I'm sorry.
All right, there you go. Go ahead.
All right. So Eric had said earlier that New York State came out and said that the, these results for, for last year were linked to the next generation's learning standards for the first time and that we shouldn't be comparing them from year to year. However, we had a goal, talking about cohorts, and this is where we are. The column all the way to the left, the bar all the way to the left is grade three. There was no cohort to compare it, to compare it with, so that's why it's a standalone on the left. You'll see that line breaking, breaking it up, so we don't want anyone to get confused. As you can see though, the light boxes are students who took this assessment in twenty twenty-two. We then compared them with students who took it last year. So I think it's important just to point out that the students who are in grade four there, who are represented in twenty twenty-three, are currently in the middle of fifth grade. And we're comparing those same students to when they took that assessment as third graders in twenty twenty-two. So.
Comparing them to themselves.
Comparing them to themselves to, you know, almost two years later. So that's, you know, when we look at them right now, so we're comparing them to where they took it last year. But my point is, we're looking at this information now and we're still analyzing this information now. But this is how cohorts performed year over year in English language arts. So our grade three was a standalone, our grade four, similar group increased from thirty-seven to thirty-eight, grade five, twenty-nine to thirty-five, and then we had our six, six, seven.
I have a question about this. I mean, this is a nice graph, but is there statistical significance between these numbers?
Well, that, that's an important point. So earlier today, Matt said to me, they're gonna ask you why sixth grade and seventh grade were the two grade levels where there was actually a reduction from year to year of those two cohorts.
Why isn't Matt answering it?
What?
Matt asked you and you're.
Matt said to me, Matt said to me.
I was prepping him for the six, seven, and eight.
He said, that's one of the questions that you're going to get asked. And I said, that's true. That, yes, that, that I'm gonna get asked about sixth grade and seventh grade. And I said to him.
You're welcome.
Yes. And my, my response to him was, again, a reminder that the state said that we can't make year to year comparison for the same reason why the largest gap of improvement is in eighth grade, one grade year more, where from seventh grade to eighth grade, the kids had an eighteen percent increase. Which is also a statistical outlier.
The state said we can't make the comparison.
You have to be able to.
No, but I, I'm, what I'm saying is, I'm, I don't, I don't wanna sort of say yay, eighth grade, yay, eighth grade when you can't compare this eighth grade, the, the giant growth of eighth grade, similar to the reduction because you can't compare, you're comparing pears to apples because the two tests are different. So the dip can't be attributed to anything that is specific to that cohort.
Right. So I'm looking at this data and it means I'm not sure how to read it.
Correct. And, and the only, the only reason why we're talking.
Well, but the goal was.
That's the only reason why we're talking about it is because the goal was to show improvement, you know, last spring when it was like, what are we going to do? We're gonna try to get our kids to do better. So we're showing what the comparison is and then the state released the results and they said, do not compare it to anything last year.
Dr. Hasler, I have a quick question.
Yes.
The seventh grade, let's just go there.
Yep.
It was mentioned.
Yep.
The light bar was sixth graders last year.
Correct.
So there is some statistical significance because the sixth grader moving into seventh grade, yes, the test will be somewhat different. But where was the learning? So even the seventh grader who moved into eighth grade and you had that huge increase, that's a win. So that's a really big one.
Right.
The other ones are, you know, they're down in the two grades, but they're not statistically significant.
Right.
So there is, it looks like there's some opportunity there, but, you know, the state's saying not to compare it, then we have to use the data for some reason that we can focus goals on student achievement to move them up that chain, so.
A hundred percent. And, and I will tell you, I sort of make light of it when in reality, we do dig deeply, you know, and, and in addition to looking at the individual item analysis, we dig very, very deeply in the performance of our subpopulations where we look at how our special education students are doing, how our English language learners. So when I look at, you know, truth be told, I look at sixth grade, both on the ELA side and the math side, they have room for growth and there are a few areas of growth within some of our subpopulations that we have work to do.
And then what do we do? Do we change our teaching? Like what, what's?
We're, that slide, I don't know, six, seven, eight, we're gonna, we'll, we'll get there.
The, so for the grade six.
Yep.
Sorry, I'm looking at the closer one. The lighter bar, they were fifth graders.
Correct.
And then the fact that there is still not that much of a drop and the standards are much harder is still a win.
A win, correct. And, and.
I like that.
But again.
Well, I mean, it is a win. As a teacher, that, that'd be a win for me.
That, that is a win.
I'm not sure how to interpret that though because that percent difference, two percent difference may not carry statistical significance. You have to analyze this with a proper.
I get you're the science guy.
Analysis. Just because it's a thirty-eight versus forty, it really doesn't mean, it doesn't mean much.
I think we have to look at this holistically. It's, it's to inform us where the kids were last year, how they did this year. And then it's really up to the administration to figure out where the gaps are.
Correct. We appreciate that.
There were some movements up, which is great. There were some movements down and like Norrie said, some of them change because when you go up to another grade, the tests.
I mean, I mean, I mean, to me, the, the better assessment would be which topics.
Right.
Which, I don't care about the percentages, which topics were problematic.
Yep.
Yeah.
Do you, I have, I'm prepared to list every single standard if you want me to. I, I, I have it.
That's a better question to ask and that's where you're gonna get some really valuable information.
Have a separate meeting.
Dr. Koit, have a private meeting.
That'll be, that'll be a working session.
Our, our student rep has a question.
What is the new standard that these tests are being held? Because you said there's a new gen standard that's different from the current.
Yes, the next generation standards is the, is the newest version of the New York State standard. So there was a lot of conversation about the Common Core for many, many years and the move is now to the next generation standards. That's the standards that the assessment is now aligned to.
So in answer to, to your question, Taber, one of the things that we'll be talking about at the end, especially at the elementary level, is how do we, you know, coordinate our own, you know, ELA program or, or approach with those next gen standards? And that's something.
That are gonna change again next year, so it's ever changing.
No, the next gen standards themselves, the standards themselves won't change next year, as far as we know. You haven't heard anything.
No.
They'll be here for a couple of years. They'll, they'll be here.
The regions is changing now. Common Core is.
Well, I mean, truth be told, one of the, one of the things that the state has been talking about for many, many years is, is a progressive assessment rather than a standard comparable assessment across the board where kids, you know, like many other assessments that they take, the questions get more difficult as the students get correct answers and it's more an adaptive exam rather than a standard exam.
And you're, you're, you're judged, you know, based about, based on how you're doing or performing almost against yourself.
Right.
And, you know, what kind of growth you're making is, is where they're moving. So this is the math proficiency cohort comparison. We did the same thing with third grade. You'll see across the board that these, these increases from year to year were significant.
Yep. And again, just to kind of go back to the, to the algebra example, we were, we had a forty-nine percent proficiency rate of students who took it in math eight. That thirty-one percent is how that same population did when they were in seventh grade. However, if you include the hundred and eighteen algebra kids that were proficient on the algebra exam, the overall proficiency rate for grade eight goes all the way up to forty-two percent. The reason why we have it separate and not inclusive is if, again, if you looked at our school report card for grade eight, forty-nine percent would be listed for the math eight exam specifically.
And there are differences in math instruction and ELA instruction. And for example, you know, at, for, for math, especially in grades three through six, we have, we have a math program which is not the end all be all, but it does provide consistency from teacher to teacher and, and grade to grade and that's, that's important. Additionally, these math assessments were done by hand. They were done on paper as opposed to the computer. And one of the things that we're continuing to learn is we have to prepare our kids to take these assessments on the computer. But a math assessment on the computer is much more challenging than it is on, 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 on paper. And we see even the same thing with ELA. Our constructed responses tend to be slightly lower or lower than our multiple choice because it's really easy to, to answer multiple choice question. When you have to go in and dig in and, and provide evidence or details from what you've read, but what you read is two computer screens previous to where you are, that's hard for some of our kids. You can go back, but now you have to remember, okay, what's the question? I answered the question on page, the question was asked on page five, but the passage was on page three. So I have to click back, you know, two pages because there are questions in between. Well, that's, that's the point. So you almost have to spend time teaching kids how to take a test, which is valuable time that's often taken away from other things that we're, we're trying to accomplish.
There's nothing on the technology side that we can do to help that, like picture-in-picture or, you know, something that allows them to not have to.
They, they have to go, I mean, not to get too technical, but they go, the, the device goes into what's called kiosk mode where they can't open up the internet, like they, they are locked into the Nextera system for taking the exam.
Coming from the state.
Correct, correct. And, and I will tell you, in speaking with the teachers, one of the greatest, what, what we're talking about right now is one of the greatest challenges of these exams. Even on the ELA side, I mean, I met with the, the middle school ELA teachers at the January department meeting and one of the things they said to me was the skills that they work on on a regular basis of editing and practicing and rewriting and, and everything. When they sit down and take the exam on the computer, what they write on the computer is, they write an answer and then they move on to the next question. And, and, you know, as much as we drill the, you know, the good test-taking skills and everything else, the experience of sitting down and taking the exam in comparison to what they do traditionally in the classroom, it's, it's different.
So, so do we find a significant delta, significant difference between performance on our internal exams versus?
Well, and, and that's the reason why, again, true disclosure, that's the reason why we said in the beginning, the math exam specifically was exclusively on the computer in twenty twenty-two and we took the exam on paper exclusively in twenty twenty-three. The state is now gonna be requiring the, that kids take the exam on the computer. Twenty twenty-four, the exams that they're gonna take in a couple of months, fifth grade and eighth grade are required to take it on the computer.
Have we?
And we're gonna have to monitor that. I mean, we're doing practice, the kids are taking, you know, we have tools that allow the kids to be able to practice taking the exams online. We're doing the prep work, but that's something that we're gonna have to monitor. Sorry.
No, I'm sorry. Do we compare our internal exams to those exams and see where the gaps are?
We, we do. That's.
Next slide.
That, that is, yes.
Any questions about math? So these, these next two slides are, last year we showed comparisons between ourselves, New York State and Orange Ulster BOSI's component districts, so the districts that are part of Orange Ulster BOSI's. And I think you'll see a wide array of results. You see trends that kind of start a little bit higher and in, in some areas, we were higher than BOSI's. Math is, is a different story where we're typically above BOSI's. We have individual specific districts that we dug into all of those. But one of the things I think is important to, to look at too is just the participation, participation rate. I don't know if you want to speak to, to that.
Sure.
What BOSI students are we talking about?
It, it is the all, the, the state assessment scores of all of the component school districts within Orange Ulster BOSI's. It's not the Orange Ulster BOSI's students. It is the scores of all of the regional school districts.
Including ours.
Including ours, correct. Yep. Right? Ours, yes. Yep, yep.
So that's, so ELA is, is there, math is, this is.
But again, if you go back to, this, this slide illustrates what we were talking about earlier, specifically in sixth grade with the participation. The ELA exam's the first exam. We had eighty-five percent of the kids take the exam in sixth. And then when you go to the math, it went down to seventy-three. So we had fifteen percent of the kids drop from taking the ELA exam to the math exam. And again, we, we, we continue to reinforce that. In fact, Mr. Berger came over when we took the. In fact, Mr. Berger came over when we took the break and he said to me, make sure you say to them, we call every single student that comes in and says that they're not taking the exam, we call home for every single student. They're successful sometimes with getting the parent to have the student take the exam. Yeah. So.
Is, is New York City included in the state numbers?
Yes.
So, does this have any tangible impact on the way we educate our kids? Because it seems to me that this is a very political test that's centralized by New York State. And whatever goal, if it's changing every year, there may be some proficiency data that they're looking for to say, well, fifty percent of the state is this and seventy percent of the state. Does this have a tangible impact on how we educate our kids in this district?
I believe that there is a degree of political aspect to this, to what you're saying. However, we're a public school district. We are required to teach to the state standards. So whatever the politics that may be infused in this, in the end, when the state says, these are the expectations that you have to hold your students to and work towards, it is our obligation. We gotta make sure, these are the standards. You, you want the next gen standards, we're gonna teach them. You want the socialization framework, we're gonna teach them.
Is there a lot of value?
But what I'm asking, I'm not asking this. I'm asking, are we learning anything from these numbers that will translate into an improvement in the way we educate?
I believe so.
Yes. And, and an area particularly are, one area in particular is when we look at our subgroups of, of students. So when we look at a particular subgroup and see how they perform, if they're not performing, you know, as well as we would like, what, we have to analyze, what are we doing? What resources are we giving them? What resources in terms of, you know, materials? What resources in terms of staff or people? You know, if we see one contingent or one subgroup that's, that's really having a hard time, we have to sit down and have hard conversations that aren't just about, you know, Eric and myself. That involves everybody at, at this side of the table and, and Elsie as well, because there are things that we have to implement.
I'm gonna ask a question. I don't know if I should ask that question. I'm gonna ask it anyways.
Great.
Since we have our own internal tools and we have standardized our exams and tied them to particular standards, why do we need the state? Why can't we analyze our own?
Because we're a public.
I, I just wanna add, I, I think what we have to remember is this is just one tool of many.
One data point.
Perfectly said.
I, I think we're getting stuck on this being a problem. You, if I'm correct, you use multiple data sources.
Hundred percent.
So this is only one piece of it.
Absolutely.
I just, I just don't want us to get kind of down a rabbit hole and get stuck there. I appreciate the question.
Right.
But it's a piece of multiple pieces of data. And that's why we're moving towards a data-centric model that we wanna see so that it can be tied. And then we can do our own comparison at some point.
And, and one of the things that, one of the things that we've said throughout many of these presentations is that you can't wait until the subsequent year's assessment to make any modifications or adjustments in student performance. The real measures are the benchmark assessments that are happening along the way in working towards that goal of student achievement. You can't, you know, we can't sit here and dig into the data and then wait until April the following school year to see how we did or whatever. This is one indicator, but it's, it's the, all of the other assessments that go along the way that we need to use to progress, monitor how kids are doing.
And this is what is shown to the greater public. So anyone in New York or anyone who has the internet can look this up and see how they are. They're not gonna say, oh, hey, how did your third, these three third grade classes do with their envisioned math, you know, unit six test or your foundations assessment? They, they don't dig down to that.
And just to speak to what Michael said, there wasn't a, I wasn't speaking about problems. I wasn't trying to identify problems. I'm asking so that everybody has an understanding of how the tests work and what we get out of them. You know, so this is really not the big picture.
We're not bashing the test.
We're not bashing the presentation. It's just.
It's an impact to test.
It's a, it is.
It's also a flawed.
I think it's exactly what Mr. Cirella said, which is.
It's flawed though.
It, it is a slice. Like this is, this is a slice. Just like, not for nothing, it's the same as the conversation about the region's exams. The region's exams is a culminating exam, but there's many cumulative assessments that go into the preparation of that exam.
But I think it's important to flesh these out, because when the community sees that our numbers are dropping, there is reasons behind it that may not speak directly to what it seems.
Right. And I also think that we have to, remember the start of this presentation was about participation. So how do we accurately assess our district if only eighty percent of the students are taking the test? So it's really important before we get to another step that we hope that people will, this is just another test. And I think that's important. We don't wanna give the students the stress or anything of that nature. But here's the other thing. You don't take this test in middle school. When you get to high school, you have to take the regions in order to graduate. So we certainly don't want our students sitting for the first time on high six test when they get to the high school. And, and so that's important. So even though the data is, you know, we use the data, it has really valuable information. It is tied to the standards that we are required to teach. It does have information for us. We do want our families to understand that this is just a snapshot in time. We'd like them to all take the test so that we can sit down here and say, we have a hundred percent participation and this is what the district looks like. So that's the piece that I think is really important.
So you just spoke to our first bullet, so thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Can I ask one question though? Before we get off the data.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Just so I understand, I understand this is one piece. Couple of slides before on the ELA, if I see it, five out of six were lower in proficiency than the Orange County and the state. And then in math, where about average on a couple, a couple were higher, a couple where, where, where kind of.
For, for ELA compared to OU BOSI's, which is orange, you know, primarily Orange County and one Ulster County district, we were higher in grades three, seven, and eight. So three out of the six.
Oh, sorry. Does this slice of data correspond to what you see on all of the data? Like, are we similarly positioned when you take in all the data?
I think, I think if your question, is your question, how do we compare it to other?
Yeah.
How do we look compared to other districts? Is that?
When you compare all, because according to just this data, he's saying that for five and six, we are not competing as well as Orange County and also as New York State. But when you look at all of the other data that you've compiled from all the other assessments given, are we more proficient than what these are showing? Or are we still around?
We can't compare ourselves to other districts in terms of our own internal, you know, methods. We don't have access.
Proficiency though, you can.
We can, for this, for this assessment.
Right. But I'm saying proficiency of the standards with our own internal data, you can decide if we're more proficient than what these are showing us, right?
But we, we need to cross-section the population too. We can't, we can't look at this data and say, we're better than someone else. Our population may be very different than Goshen. It may be very different than, than Middletown.
Right, no, no, no.
You really need a multivariate analysis here to look at each individual group and how that each individual group presents. This data is raw. It, it's, it's a brick. And if you wanna chisel it, you really gotta chisel it down into really deep stats. And then you can learn. This is.
And that's what he was asking.
And, and, and I, I will say, for me personally, the, the data that I dig into the most is the reports of how our kids are doing on individual skills in comparison to the region and to the state. It's, it's yay for us on the ones that, you know, the one example, when I said we, eighty-five percent of our kids got the question correct and we were eighteen percent or sixteen percent higher than the region and the state in, on that particular question. However, it's what are the areas that we are deficient in? Because ultimately, you know, when you start to talk about next year, the goal is to improve. Like regardless of what the rest of the state is doing, the goal for us is to increase and to get better. What are the areas where we find that our, our students are not performing as well in and why? Why is that happening? And how do we, how do we build upon that?
And that's why, just to get to this point, one of the things that we did at the K five this year is we revamped our report cards. So if you saw what report cards look like in the past versus what report cards look like this year at the elementary level, they are much more detailed when it comes to standards. One of the biggest reasons that we did that was so that we could show progress in terms of how our students are performing towards the standard on a trimester basis. So that, that was really important for, for me in order to kind of start to make sure everything gets tied together. So that, in addition to what we plan on doing, and, you know, Ms. Rodriguez spoke about the family engagement piece, you know, we've shifted as well to building level monthly school newsletters. Everybody gets one, every building, you know, puts one out. And talking about the importance of these assessments is, is paramount and will be part of that focus. As far as student achievement and at the K five level, we brought foundations in this year. This time last year, I was talking about the need for a foundational multisensory approach to phonics instruction. Because we spoke to the teachers, we heard from the teachers, they said, this is a need of ours. This is a need for our students. So we brought foundations in. What we are doing, we have a meeting scheduled for tomorrow and then hopefully one of our last ones next week with potential new reading programs. And again, not only because we feel like it's what, what our teachers could use, but it's also what our, what our kids need. It's been a challenge to make sure that everyone is on the same page when it comes to our ELA instruction over the last, last year. What foundations does is you can go to any K one or two classroom, because, you know, we started out at those three grade levels. Within a day or two, they're doing pretty much the same thing. And, you know, we visited one of the, I'm gonna show you real quick some of the highlights and this will take only a minute. And I know it's, it's late, but I do think it's important that everybody see this. So this was from Miss Laird's first grade class at Smith Clove.
This conversation is new. I do really like it. I feel like it's meeting all students' needs. There's so many different challenges and elements of the lesson that are, that students are really enjoying. There are interactive boards and whiteboards and different notebooks and the little song of the drills that we do with the letters and the letter sounds that I really think that's a term to take that age in the next year that really establishes the foundation for their phonics skills.
Good work. Oh. I have my drift. Let's see. You wanna do it, Anthony? Let's let Anthony have a turn. Oh. So far, so good. Oh. A, L, L, you did two Ls. Excellent. A on math period. All right, good job. I think I'm providing the foundational skills that we need and that we're really seeing the district needs at whole. Because we don't wanna expect students just to know things. So we're going back to the basics of letters, letter sounds, tricky words that we can't spell out. And it's really establishing that foundation that will be to support them throughout the elementary school and so on.
So just to, and then obviously I spoke about the new reading program. And my hope is that in a few weeks from now, I'll be able to sit in front of you. Sit in front of you to talk about a, a potential new reading program for the K five level.
I, I think the, I think because our reading program was poor at best at the elementary level, it'll last probably decade or longer, that, that's a reflection of what we're seeing in these grades, right? Like, I mean, we're, we're below the state. And, and listen, personally, this, I, I think the test is not valid, right? Because fifty percent or at least are not proficient in New York State, right? So half of every student is not proficient. So I don't, I don't personally believe that. But I mean, I'm not in the classroom every day. But I think that that's really a reflection. So I think these numbers will do better as we go and the program, and Matt's done a lot of great work, from what I hear, on getting with the teachers and everybody else that, that you've selected on your team to go back to the basics of where we were succeeding. And we were the district that we were when we were teaching reading the right way.
I just wanna add, I think we have to keep in mind that there's been a huge demographic shift in our community. And the Spanish-speaking population is challenged when it comes to the ELA side, at least what was shared with me. I don't know the percentages, but it has been pretty significant if I understand.
You could probably get those numbers though. You could probably share with us.
I believe we have those numbers. How many ENL students do we currently have? I think close to eight hundred students.
I'd be interested to know how many were proficient on this test. I mean, not that you have to share that now or give.
Yeah, we'll get that to you. We have, we have that.
To see what that total number is, you know, and if it's five hundred and, and they're, and, you know, whatever number is proficient on it, how that correlates to this. Because I think that that would give us a raw number. Who, you know, the, the kids who are learning English, it's kind of hard for them to be proficient.
And there are changes even within the school year. And Eric could say.
Are you asking K twelve? The, the ENL numbers, K twelve? The, the, as of January twenty-fifth of twenty-twenty-four, we were at seven twenty-eight.
And what were we at September?
September one, we were at five eighty-one.
And I think, I think, I mean, I don't know how you guys do this. I mean, hats goes off to you. But implementing a recommendation into the class that has that mixed, diverse language component is really, really challenging.
Well, I, I will tell you, sixth grade, for example, I think sixth grade has been a focus for us. Sixth grade, one of the things that we went back and we looked at was how, how our various subgroups are doing and performing. Statistically, ninety-three percent of our ENL students in sixth grade, ninety-three percent of them got a level one on the state exam. So for us, that's an area of focus. How are we supporting that subpopulation of students to help them improve and be more successful? Now, that is, that's of the population of students similar to what Matt said, that were required to sit down and take the exam. There's also a population of kids that have, are in the country for less than one year that are not required to sit down and take the ELA exam that will be on the assessment next year.
And can I just point one thing out?
Yep.
If any one of us were taken to another country, to Japan, and we were in Japan for a year and we were then asked to take a Japanese test, how would we, how would we fare? I would say.
I did this. Well, I came here when I was.
It, it's very difficult. Just us ourselves to be able to be proficient in Japanese in an exam. So I think that we need to take that into account when we take a look at the students who've been here for a year. And we also have to take into account that there is a, a lack of strong educational background for some of these students. So that combined with the fact that you've been here a year, it's very difficult for students to be proficient in this.
And I think you also need to take into account that our teachers and our administrative staff and our support staff are working so incredibly hard. What they are doing and what they are, in sometime, in some cases, trying to figure out on their own. Because, you know, there are teachers who are very proud, right? And for years, they, they've, they've been able to tackle things. It's different now for some of our, for some of our folks. And that's, I just think that's incredibly important that these numbers, do we always want our numbers to be higher? Absolutely. I will say this, these numbers are not a reflection of how, the, the, how hard our teachers are working. Because they are doing what they are being asked, asked to do. And I'll only speak for the elementary level. I know it's the same at the middle school. But you have a group of twenty to twenty-two students, diverse ner, diverse needs that are different even than the diverse needs from, from a few years back. And we have to meet our, our teachers where they are. And it's our job to support them. It's our job to support our administrators so that they can ultimately support our students. And part of that is going, going to be materials. Part of that's going to be a program. The other part is continued, continuing to look at how we, we staff people, continuing to look at how we, you know, go about making sure they need.
Some of the, some, an example of what Matt is talking about, it's not just curriculum, it's not just curriculum-based. One of the, at, at the middle level, the, the middle school's looking at the way that they provide AIS. I think I've mentioned this in the past, where previously we would have ELA teachers, math teachers, and then separately, we would have AIS teachers, teachers that would pull students in order to be able to provide AIS. And one of the things that the middle school started to do for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year was look at the way that they're providing AIS where instead of, if Eric Hassler, and, and just so that you know, any student that does not test proficient is required to be screened for AIS. So every single student that gets, that gets below a three, we have to officially review for consideration to put into AIS. And one of the things that the middle school realized was it was inefficient for Eric Hassler. If I got a level two and I was required to take AIS, I would have my math teacher. And then I would have a separate teacher that I would go to for academic intervention in math. And they redid their schedule and they looked at it where if I'm now a math teacher and I, I teach four sections of seventh grade math, my fifth section of instruction is to my own AIS students. Where on alternating days, Eric Hassler, who's in my third period class, gets AIS. Period five, Eric Hassler comes back to me and receives AIS from the same teacher. So that way I know on a day-to-day basis how that student is doing. And there's not a disconnect between how I'm doing. And fortunately, you know, we're only about a semester into it. I've been talking to the middle school about how that's going. They've been reviewing mid-year grades and at, in math and in ELA, they administer common. They've been reviewing mid-year grades and at, in math and in ELA, they administer common assessments. They've seen an increase in overall averages of students of six point three of kids that are in A I S, which is significant. Because every single student takes the same common unit test and midterm exam. Which means that if the whole math GPA is increasing, that's consistent across all. So every single student who takes an algebraic equation, seventh grade unit test, that's the same exam for every single student across the board. So we use those benchmark tools to predict how the kids are going. They're looking at possibly, hopefully, it's a scheduling and staffing situation. But we're looking at hopefully doing that at the ELA, on the ELA side as well for students moving into next year. These are the, aside from just the curricular piece, these are some of the organizational pieces that ultimately will pay dividends for our kids as well. So.
I agree. Thank you.
When we practiced, this was seven minutes.
Yeah. No, they were great, great questions. Yeah.
No, important questions and important things to, can you to focus on. So are there any other questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to thank you both for also editing this and making it a lot more streamlined and easy to use. I appreciate that.
It was brilliant.
Brilliant. Sorry, but sorry it wasn't.
Did you say you had?
Brief.
Yeah, okay.
They didn't understand the brief. Okay, next up on the agenda, approval of the minutes. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Policy manual update. We have delete policy? Okay. So are there any questions before we move to a motion? Okay. Motion to approve the policy manual up through ten three. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Personnel, Ms. Hock?
Thank you. I'd like to request approval for the items listed under personnel this evening. But I would also like to point out a few people who are in our audience tonight. In addition to the many people who are listed for retirements, I'd like to specifically point out. It gets emotional again. Nancy Piper, thank you for all of your years here at Monder Woodbury. And Mr. Joe Coto for. In addition to that, there are two other people who are here this evening I'd like to recognize. Keisha Kara is going to be stepping up into the middle school assistant principal role. Filling in in the dean role at the middle school is going to be Mr. John Benzos. Thank you for coming today. Benros.
May I have a motion to approve the personnel items?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All approved, all in favor? Aye. Business and financial. Mr. Cahill?
Yeah, thank you. I respectfully request the approval of business financial items twelve point one through twelve point five.
Any questions? May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Committees on special education and preschool special education, may I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Reports by Board of Education committees. Let's do policy first.
Okay. Start with policy. One second, let me get my notes. Okay. We met on January thirtieth and we worked on the policies that were presented tonight for our first meeting. Our next meeting, which again is a public meeting, everyone is welcome to attend, will be here at the Ed Center at noon on February twenty seventh.
Any questions? Okay. Visitation?
Visitation. We, we visited two buildings this last week, on the thirty-first. We visited the Smith Clove Elementary School and Principal Cook was kind enough to take us around. The things that are new there since we were last visiting, they paved the upper parking lot, they seal coated the lower parking lot, and they restripped both areas. They put new sun shades in all the classrooms. They also put the security shades, excuse me, in all the classrooms. The security labeling on the exterior windows and doors of all the classrooms. They have new doors on the classrooms that have the ability to be locked from the inside. They have three new sets of doors with card access, access that were installed. They had a new water main piping that was done all in-house by Andre's team. And they have a new Amazon charging station that we saw in the hallway by the steps. They also have a zone map for emergencies that the Putnam Northern Westchester Bosse's helped them develop with a safety audit. And they're the first in the district to have it. It identifies classrooms with kids with special needs and has a plan to safely evacuate if needed. And they also have to-go bags in the classroom, which again is one of the first in the district to do that with, you know, maps, whistles, class lists, things that someone would need if they have to get out of the classroom pretty quick. The needs of the building, they need a security vestibule to be put in, which they are working on. The boilers to be replaced, they've been around since nineteen sixty-eight. And they're looking for a new water filling station on the second floor. Hopefully, all these things will be included in the capital project. The boilers will definitely be in the first phase of the capital project as probably will be the security vestibule. The second building we looked at was this building, the Board of Ed building. We also had seal coating and restriping in the parking lots here. We replaced all these interior doors and locks, again with the inside locks. And when the capital project takes effect, we are hoping to put a new roof, new windows, upgrade the painting. Because we've heard rumors that this building leaks a little bit from time to times. That's all we got.
Excellent. Thank you. Any questions? Ms. McCleary, would you like to give an update on the search task force?
So we are moving along in the process. I want to make sure that the community is aware again that we have a kicker going across the front page of our website. So you're encouraged to visit there for all the up-to-date information. And the newest things that we have coming up this, I believe, next week are the forums that we have for the community. So all of the information is on there. Again, we encourage the public to come. It's going to be a casual event in the sense that it's not just going to be the company that has been hired dictating everything that's going on. It's really going to be a conversation setting at the high school cafeteria, so we encourage everybody to come for that. If you are unable to attend that event in person, it is also being Zoom. There is a link on the website, I believe, for that as well. And if you can't get to the community forums, you are welcome to please participate in the survey. I do think that at last check, which was on Saturday's email, we have over three hundred and fifty families that have participated in the survey. So I encourage, you know, everybody to continue to do that. And the last piece of it is that on there also is an email address. That email address goes directly to the private company. It does not come to the Board of Education members. It does not come to the cabinet. It is your opportunity to express what it is that you might be looking for in the next superintendent. And what will happen is, at our most recent meeting, we were explained how once the application process has closed, the Board of Education will then get a detailed analysis of all of that data. We will not have names, we will not have titles, we will not have any of that. It will simply be that these are the main facts that came up in the forum. These are the main facts that came up via email. These are the main facts that came up during the survey, et cetera. So we will get all of that information, I believe, by the end of February, beginning of March. Am I, no, excuse me, the end of March, because the application process is still open, I believe, until March twenty first. Don't quote me because I don't have it pulled up, twenty second, March twenty second. So once that is completed, they will go ahead and get all of that data over to all of us board members. So I think that's it. Did I miss anything else?
Yeah.
Thank you. And I will add that District Vice shared with us that our survey responses far outpaced what they experienced in most districts. So kudos, and we'd like to keep it going because we just like to really exceed the goal if we can, super exceed. But it helps us, the data will help inform us as we're looking for the next superintendent. So it's very important to have that come in. Next up is the, well, first, any questions from the task force? Okay. Audit Committee, we have a meeting, our next meeting's not scheduled till April fourth. But in the meantime, what we're doing is we're, the team is working on pulling together RFPs for a new audit firm. There'll be at least, I think, four submitted, but they might be whittled down to two depending on responses and data. So we'll be looking at that. And then the Audit Committee will be interviewing those particular candidates that fall into that. So we'll be busy in March, I'm sure, and April. That's all I have. Any questions? Okay. Report by Student Board Representative.
Thank you. All right. Good evening, everyone. As we find ourselves already somehow halfway through the year, school year at this point, it's kind of crazy how fast it's gone. We're starting our new classes, students are moving into the second part of the year where we're looking at, kind of focusing on those final exams, kind of, we have many. We're meeting new people because we are in these new classes. And one thing that I think I definitely want to bring to light this going into the second semester is continuing to motivate our students to be active in their education. Because second half, many seniors do slack off and we get this thing called senioritis. I haven't gotten it yet personally, but can't say forever. But I think we need to continue to explore ways to enhance our student engagement and progress towards making sure our attendance rates continue to stay at a good level. I don't know what those programs look like, whether that's reward systems or even just events, assemblies, contests. I think there's many different methods we could take with this and I'm going to try to explore to find the best one. As well as today in the high school, we did have an assembly featuring our guest author, which was A S King. She was a very good speaker. I think something different that we took on this assembly from our others was that this was an author, not a motivational speaker, not someone that spoke to us about like our health or what we're doing in life. It kind of just felt like a one-to-one on conversation on where we're at as young people and how sometimes we all have different paths and it's never going to be the same. And it's okay if you don't do well at school. It's not going to be the end-all, be-all. You'll still strive to be the best you can be, but there's other routes that you can take and find ways to be yourself in that way. So I thought that was a really interesting presentation that she gave, even her books. Firstly, my English class read one of her books called Collections and I thought it was a really interesting take on some short stories that I think many times students do not like to read a big novel. Personally, I do, but it was a nice break from those and kind of getting that interesting take on something so small as collections and what it is, what it means to kind of look back on the past and what it means to also look towards the future. As well as we have some things going on in the high school, we had the art, we have, we have our, what we call the subway wing, like the staircase. It has art all over it and what we do every few months is like we paint it something different. And this month is Valentine's. I love it. It's really cute. The artists there do an amazing job. Personally, I can't draw, but I wish I could. We also have that, we had, as well as the, this week we'll be celebrating the Schools Counselors Week. So I say thank you to all the counselors. The counselors have always been there for me, really. As someone who's going to college, it is very stressful and kind of, it feels like there's no path. It feels like you're just kind of all out there alone. But they've kind of made this, what I've really appreciated this year has been, they've been here the whole way. They say if you have a question, if you have a question about your schedule, where you're going, what's going on, like where do I do next? It's been very easy to get in touch with them and they've kind of made it very easy to get in touch with. Many times, previous schools I've been at, it was very hard to communicate with them. It felt like it was stagnant or it was all on my own here. It doesn't feel that. And I feel like they've done a really good job at just kind of being there for the students. So what I'm going to be doing for the next few weeks is, we're going into exam season. As seniors myself, we're also trying to figure out where we're going to college. And so I kind of want to do a mental health check-in, just see where students are at. It's not going to be, is this my next step? It's just, we're going to see where the students are at. Because many times we go day-to-day-to-day, three hundred and sixty-five days, sometimes no one asks, how are you? And what's going on in life? So I'm going to be modeling my questions dependent on where the questions are going. So if we're talking about elementary schools, we're going to talk about, how are you feeling today? Very simple, happy, sad, excited, down. What, what did you play at recess? Who are your friends? Like, this is very going to be anonymous. I'm not going to ask any questions. I just kind of want to see where they're at. For middle schoolers, we're just going to kind of talk about like, where's their mood? How are the, how's the relationships with their family and friends? Is schoolwork doing well? Like, are we managing it well? Is there problems that we're seeing? And what I also want to state about these questions is they, if the student wants to ask for extra help, I will give them those resources. But I'm not going to push it on them in any way because sometimes students have had this where it's like, this is where you're going to go right immediately. Like, there's already, seek help right here. I will of course say, if you have any questions or you further want to continue this conversation, email me and I will give you the best resources for where you're at. For high schoolers, we're going to talk about where's the stress level? Because there's nine classes in a day. It's, it's a lot going on, a lot of homework, especially for me, AP kids. We got homework every night. So many times we do go the whole entire day, maybe five hours of sleep, no lunch sometimes. We don't take a break. No one asks us, how are you doing? And it's, it's kind of a scary world when you have to think, in a few months, I'm going to be in college, going to be on my own. So I kind of just want to be there for the students to just see where they're at. And maybe there is a policy that I can see and maybe I see, whether it's stress or we say, okay, is there a homework issue here? Are there, are we struggling at recess in the elementary schools? I think the survey is just going to kind of get me a ground, at least a foundation of where the students are at. So, yeah, that's where we're at.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up are reports by Board and Central Office.
Well, first I want to thank the Board for unanimously passing the resolution for the firefighters and EMS. I'd also like to ask this Board to look at other exemptions that we haven't in quite some time, specifically veterans exemptions. My highlight of last weekend was seeing Dear Edwina at Central Valley. It was absolutely amazing. The kids were phenomenal. Thank you to everybody that worked on that. And thank you to Matt and Eric for your very comprehensive presentation and for fielding all of our questions so effortlessly. And have a good night.
Thank you.
I wanted to, second what Dawn said, definitely glad that we were able to and given an opportunity to help the volunteer services in our area. I do want to thank Dr. Hassler and Dr. Kravitz for the presentation. I apologize for the questions, but, you know, this was very, very interesting. It's, it's very incredible to see that, how the data science is beginning to reshape our education, which is, which is phenomenal. And thank you and have a good evening.
I would also like to echo Dawn and Sergey in saying how happy, how pleased I am that we were able to pass the resolution for our volunteers. They definitely work hard and deserve everything we can possibly give them. I'd also like to welcome Zeb, our alcohol and drug abuse prevention specialist. I think he left already, but welcome. Thank you, Mr. Kravitz and Dr. Hassler for your presentation and for your patience with our questions. I'd also like to thank our teachers for all the hard work they do to improve our students. Congratulations to all the retirees. I also attended Edwina Junior, Dear Edwina Junior, last Friday, which was a lot of fun, especially since my grandson was one of the company. And this morning I got to, and I hope I'm pronouncing this correctly, I got to read to Mrs. Malley's kindergarten class at Smith Clove. I read Gilbert Goldfish Wants a Pet. It was so much fun, really, really so much fun. And I'm looking forward to seeing Seussical at Pine Tree on Friday. So, and thank you all and have a lovely evening.
Thank you to all of our volunteers, our long-serving teachers and administrators for retiring. Congratulations and thank you so much for all your hard work. I'd like to thank and wish Happy Women in Sports Day to all of our administrators and athletes and coaches that are out there doing great things on the girls and women's side and have a great, safe evening.
I too want to say thank you to the volunteers, for the firemen and firewomen that come out and were able to speak. We're very pleased that we were able to go ahead and pass the resolution. resolution. I want to thank Dr. Hassler and Mr. Kravitz for their great presentation. And I want to say thank you to the Central Valley students who invited us to their play, which was absolutely amazing. I definitely did smile quite a bit. They have some great performers. I say this every time I'm up here, it is the highlight for us to be able to go into the buildings and see what it is that our students do. It makes our volunteering worth it, at least for me. So, I appreciate the invites. I'm disappointed that I will not be able to attend Pine Tree's play this weekend, but I do wish them all the best. And I want to thank Ms. Cook and the Smith-Clove staff, and Mrs. Laird's class for inviting me in to be a guest reader today. That was also a great highlight. My kids are much older, so they have no desire for me to sit and read them a book, so it was very nice to go and sit and do that today. So, I thank them. And I want to wish the people on the retirement list very well. I have four children in this district, as I've said many times, and Ms. Pfeifer was fortunate enough to have the majority of them, and she will be greatly missed. And I wish you all the best, and I hope to see you upstate relaxing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Congratulations to retirees, Joe and Nancy, thank you for all your service to our students and staff, but also me, when I was a newbie. I remember my first meeting in a Sapphire Lab, where you almost killed me in asking all the questions. But thank you for that. Today's a wall-reader-loud day, and a big shout-out to our librarians and all the building administrators to organize various events. I attended the Assembly of our author, Amy King, talked to our students, as Michael mentioned earlier, the importance of learning from our past experiences, but then how does that positively shape our future? I also had a pleasure to read to the Sapphire kindergarten kids in their enchanted learning libraries. On that, good night.
One more shout-out to the retirees, and any retirees who are watching this, or get an opportunity to see this recording, please reach out to Human Resources for paperwork for substitute. Nancy already said she'll be back, but we'll help you with your substitute paperwork. Never say never.
Dolores is back.
That's where I was going next. A warm welcome back for Dolores. Thank you for being here, Dolores.
I agree with what everyone has said. It's an awesome time of year between, you know, all of the, all of the plays that are happening. Next week is the Prism and the Kaleoscope Concert at the High School and the Middle School. Phenomenal opportunities to see a great performance. I encourage everybody to go. You know, this is the second board meeting in a row where I look at the list of retirees, and it is very bittersweet, because I know many of them. Congratulations to Nancy, congratulations to Joe. Happy School Counselor Week. One of the retiring on the list is Mary Stack. You know, it is School Counselor Week, however, Ms. Stack is one of the secretaries in the guidance main office, and she's often the first person that kids see when they walk into the middle school counseling office. And, you know, when you're a student in need, it never, never underestimate the power of being a secretary when a student walks into the guidance office, and that's the first person, is Ms. Stack who's there to help. So, every single person on that list is going to be greatly missed. Thank you so much for everything that you've, you've done for our kids and for our school district. Best wishes to you all.
Thank you very much. I echo what everyone said about Dear Edwina Junior. It was perfectly cast. It was hysterically funny. And it's weird when you go to these plays, you almost, at the end, you're standing, doing the standing ovation, and you almost want to cry because you're so happy that these kids who have come so far. And I know as a building principal for, for a long time, and I'm sure Dr. Earlton and Mr. Brown felt the same way, when you know the stories of those kids, and what it took for the shy kid to finally, you know, come out of his or her shell, or the student who suffered loss, and then, you know, a month ago, and now is still there singing in front of everyone, it's hard not to shed a tear. Seussical will be similar this week, this weekend. Frozen Junior is the first weekend in March for their North Main play. I read Madeline Finn and the Library Dog. If you have a student or a child who is unsure about reading in front of large groups, share that book with them, and then have them read to the, to a dog, because it will boost their confidence according to the book. It was great to share that with Smith-Clove today. Michael, I would love to talk to you more about the idea of wellness days for, for some of our students. It has come up at a couple of different times, both at the administrative level, at the teacher level, and at the student level. So, you and I will connect about that. Retirees, yeah, Nancy who's here, you know, got to know Nancy both as a teacher and as a parent of students at North Main, which is always special. And the list is long, because there's going to be a vacuum in some levels. It's not just a district teacher, a longtime teacher who's leaving. We have two district coordinators who are retiring. We have many teacher leaders on this list, and then obviously, we also have a principal. And when you are a building principal, you want to make sure that when you are leaving and moving on, that your building is taken care of. And I had a chance, and Joe, I've said this to you before, but I've had a chance to, to meet with Joe. He came on as my AP, I think only for like a year, because then I was called over to the high school. But I knew without a doubt that that building was in good hands. And it makes you feel so good when you just know that something that you've worked so hard, you know, towards, or a building that you care about so much, is just taken care of. So, I will say this to you, Joe, it's our job to make sure that we could do the same for you, and make sure that building is, continues to be taken care of, and we will. So, thank you, and have a good night.
So, just a couple of quick things. So, we were notified by the New York State Education Department, the Office of Audit Services, that we will be undergoing an audit of the COVID-19 federal money. So, it's CARES and it's CARISA. We're one of, I guess, they've done four audits in this new program, so I don't know why we were selected, but we were.
We were lucky.
Yeah, that's one way to put it. So, the opening conference is February 26th. That's in, on the 28th, we have our first budget presentation, so the timing is not great. I'm not that concerned about it, you know, but still, we're doing, we have this new audit, we have an internal audit with our internal auditor, we're doing RFP for external auditors. So, never a dull moment in the business office. The other thing I just wanted to mention was the Office of State Comptroller's Fiscal Stress Indicator. So, every year, the state comptroller sort of rates towns and school districts in the state, and it's supposed to be a metric to give us some forewarning about fiscal issues or distress. So, the district got the highest rating, so it's zero to 100, with a low score being better than a high score. So, our financial score was a zero. So, no designation. There's an environmental component to it, and we got a score of 15 on that out of 100, so it's still very good, no designation. So, just basically means our reserves are good, financial resources are good, and we're under no duress financially. So, that's it. Everyone has a nice evening. Thank you.
I echo what everyone else says. Thanks so much to the volunteers. Glad we could step up and help the firemen and EMT. Congratulations to the retirees. You guys have earned this, and we thank you for your service. It is the play season and the concert season, and I haven't had a chance to go out and see some of them, but I'm going to go this weekend to Pine Tree, so I'm looking forward to that. And have a great evening.
Yes, I echo everyone's sentiments, and have a great night.
Thank you, Mr. Kravitz, and Dr. Hassler for the presentation. Long, long, not, not on you, but it was important information, and the questions were warranted, so thank you. Mr. Cotto, got to say something. So, he's one of the few faces that I remember from when I was a student here. I'm sorry, man, I had to. So, he's been around. He's due, he's due to retire, so it's, it's his time. Sorry, Ms. Cotto. But, but a lot of my, a lot of my alumni loved you. I never had a chance to have you, so I can't, I can't claim that I did. But a lot of them loved you, and I, unfortunately, I got to let them know that it's your time. But it's, it's definitely bittersweet, and I wish you all the best. And have a good night.
Joe, I've known you forever, for 23 years, so it's, we're living together. Nancy, you've been here a very long time. Your legacy is going to last forever. I think that you, all these educators, because I look at the names, and the names just go on and on, I think that these educators leave their legacy behind, and it's the passion that you have for kids, the passion that you have for your families. So, everybody's going to miss you but me, because I'm going to. So, I had to say that. I'm just really thankful to have worked with such an amazing group of people, and very proud of the work that you're leaving behind, and you're leaving a great legacy. So, thank you. To Eric and Matt, thank you for your presentation. I know that it's a lot of work, and I think that that is just a little piece of what this district is, because I was very fortunate to be able to welcome this, early this month, the Orange County families to the OCMEA High School All County Festival at our high school. We have some amazing, amazing talented musicians in our district. We have some amazing talented young children, because I was able to go to the play and see the students at Central Valley. We are truly a well-rounded district. So, this is a piece, but we are much bigger than just this little piece. We are a school district that has amazing athletes, amazing musicians, everything that you can imagine we offer here in our school district, and I'm really proud of the work that you have all done. I did get an opportunity, and I did get a crown, so I have to say thank you to Ms. Cook, because I was able to read to Mrs. Covert and Mrs. Adler's first grade class, and I read Sometimes All I Need Is Me, because that's an important book. And so I just want to say thank you. Again, have a good night, and I turn it over to the Board President.
Thank you. I want to thank all the speakers that came out tonight. I want to thank all the volunteers that showed up as well. Also, the Board for its unanimous support of the resolution to pass that. I want to thank Dr. Hassler and Matt Kravitz for your work. It's, it's a lot of work to put a together presentation, and then also to try to second-guess what questions will be asked and be prepared for it. And it was a great effort, so I appreciate that. I want to welcome Zeb as well, congratulate all the retirees. I wish you very much happiness and health in your retirement. I know you're not going yet, but it'll be here before we know it. And with that, I just want to wish everyone a great evening. May I have a motion to adjourn into executive session to discuss a personal matter?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.